Welcome everybody to tonight's Order and Counsel meeting. I am the Mayor, councillor Lucinda Congory, and I declare this meeting open at 7:01pm. In the unlikely event of an emergency, please follow the direction of council officers and the emergency procedures on the wall near the door. I'd like to note that I've given approval for the journalists from the Brimbank Star Weekly and for Channel 31 to audio and video record the meeting. Members of the gallery are not intended to be recorded, but please notify the journalists or a council officer if you have any concerns. Item number one on the agenda is the official opening and welcome to country, so I'd ask everyone to please stand. On behalf of Brimbank City Council, I would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, the Wurundjeri people, and pay our respects to elders past and present. Please be seated. Councillors, please remain standing for the council commitment. As a council, we will act in the best interests of the Brimbank community and consider the immediate and long-term impacts of our decisions. We will make these decisions fairly and without bias. We will uphold all of our obligations under the laws of Victoria and to council's local laws, and we'll act in accordance with our code of conduct. Thank you, councillors. Please be seated. So moving on to item number three on the agenda tonight, which is apologies and leave of absence. There is one apology for tonight's Order and Counsel meeting, and I note that councillor Judy Chair is on leave until the 2nd of April. So I also note councillor Pepper Fortyo is an apology to tonight's meeting. So we have one recommendation in... Sorry, we also have one recommendation in relation to approving leave of absence for two councillors. So councillors, is there a motion to, in terms of leave of absence? Councillor Lancashire?
Madam Mayor, I move the motion.
Thank you. And a second, councillor David? I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, item number four is disclosure of conflicts of interest. Councillors, are there any declarations of conflicts of interest for this evening's proceedings? Councillor Farm?
I would like to declare item 12.11 as a direct conflict. My family have a business in the area.
Thank you, councillor Farm. Councillors, are there any other disclosures of conflict of interest this evening to note? No? Thank you. Okay, so we'll go on to item number five, which is designation of items as confidential. There are four items to be designated as confidential this evening. May I have a mover of a motion to designate these items as confidential? Councillor Headitch? Thank you, councillor Headitch. And a second of the motion? Councillor Borg? So I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, item number six is confirmation of minutes of previous council meetings. May I have a mover of a motion to confirm the minutes of the previous council meetings, of which there were two? Councillor Tarkos?
I'd like to move the motion as put in the papers.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Do I have a second for that? Councillor Farm? Okay, I'll put that motion to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay. Moving on to item number seven, which is condolences. There is one listed item of condolence this evening, and the CEO has also advised that there is an item of urgent business tonight that relates to condolences for the City of Christchurch. As such, I'd like to foreshadow that we may want to consider an item of urgent business in relation to this condolence after we've considered item 7.1 on the agenda. So item 7.1 is the passing of Mr Bill Landigou. And I think it would be appropriate for this council to note the passing of Mr Landigou. So I wonder if I would have a motion condolence? Councillor David? Thank you. Is there a second for the motion? Councillor Tarkos? Councillor David, do you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Indeed, I knew Bill for a long, long time. He was a parliamentarian, a very good parliamentarian, quite a long time. A very... He wasn't scared to speak to what he thought was the right thing. And Bill also is a power broker. One of those power brokers in politics in the last year. So... Bill was also a true friend of the military class of Gibbon, and he worked for the Union as I knew him earlier before he became a parliamentarian. And indeed, the council, I want to say that the council acknowledged the passing of Bill and extended perhaps condolences to the family.
Thank you, councillor David. With a second, I'd like to speak. Councillor Tarkos?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We also, on my behalf, I would like to extend our heartfelt condolences for Bill Landigou's children, Anne Marie and Andrew, and their families. Bill did serve as a member of Duda Gala from 1976 to 1992, and during his career in Parliament, Mr Landigou was leader of the Opposition of the Legislative Council, leader of the government, and also Minister for Economic Development, Tourism, Industrial Affairs and Labour and Industry. I have known Bill myself for over 35 years, and I just wanted to also mention that in his... The last few years of his life, he dedicated a lot of time to people with disabilities and set up a group called Team, which gave individuals with disabilities jobs and training, and created a lot of empowerment and transformation in their lives. He did stand for the underdog, and he also did at the end of his life. So, finally, Bill Landigou. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Councillors, is there anyone else who would like to speak for this motion? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, so we have a couple of items that we need to go through now to change the order of business. So I think it would be appropriate to bring the urgent business item forward and do it as part of condolences. So, as previously mentioned, the CEO has advised that there is an item of urgent business tonight that relates to condolences for the City of Christchurch and the Muslim community. May I have a mover of a motion to consider the urgent business item at this stage in the order of business? Councillor Headitch? Is there a second? Councillor Lancashire? Councillors, I'll put that to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you. Carried. So now I'm going to move... Ask for a motion to admit this item as urgent business. Do I have a mover to admit it? Councillor David, and do I have a second please? To admit this is councillor Alan? Okay, put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay. So now we're at item 7.2, which is condolences for the City of Christchurch and the Muslim community. Do I have a mover of a motion? Councillor Alan?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the motion that council writes to the Mayor of the City of Christchurch, extending its condolences for the recent attack on its citizens, and offering the City of Brimbank support and solidarity for the Maite. And B, writes to the Islamic Council of Victoria, the local mosques in the city of Brimbank, B, the Deer Park Mosque, the Sunshine Mosque, the Khalid bin Walid Mosque, extending its condolences for the recent attack on the Muslim community in New Zealand, and expressing the City of Brimbank's support for the Victorian Muslim community.
Thank you, councillor Alan. Do I have a second for this motion? Councillor Tarkos? And with a move, I'd like to speak to motion councillor Alan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last Friday, around 2pm, myself and many others around the world were shocked to hear of the tragedy unfolding that would ultimately lead to the death of 50 Muslims and injury of 50 more. Though what I was reading shocked, I was not at all surprised when I learnt that the shooter was a far-right white nationalist. It doesn't matter what his name is, because he could have been anybody listening to some of our nation's most senior figures. Their words have helped create the situation we now find ourselves in. For too long, we've heard sentences like "it's okay to be white", tidal waves of immigration, and they're taking our place at the hospital waiting line as they use fear as a selfish tactic for greater power. Maybe that's why I was shocked, but not surprised when the reaction of a fellow colleague was to tell me, "well, it's about time somebody evened the score. I know you're Muslim, but I'm not saying all Muslims are terrorists, but all terrorists are Muslim." When I told him the vast majority of terrorism victims are Muslim, the response was grudging silence. I was shocked but not surprised to learn of a recent study that showed in the past year alone, the Murdoch media released roughly eight articles every day that presented Muslims or Islam in a negative light. Fairfax Media have released more than three articles every single day. Together, that's roughly 4,000 stories in the past year alone that helped shape our nation's opinions. And people still wonder how racism continues to grow in Australia. It worries me that what happened in New Zealand could have happened here. Those victims' faces we see in the media could be my own family's faces staring back at me. So what can we do to move forward? Last year, I passed a motion on possible opportunities for a community forum inviting leaders from the Australian Muslim community and the Brimbank Interfaith Network to facilitate a community conversation to continue to strengthen multiculturalism and address racial prejudice. We need this now more than ever. You too can do your part. If you hear somebody say something racist, call it out for what it is. Don't stand silently and let it continue. If you see somebody being victimised, don't pretend like you didn't see anything and just continue on your way. Here in Brimbank, we celebrate our diversity. We celebrate what makes us different. And we welcome people of various backgrounds with open arms. To the victims of the mosque killings, in Arabic, we say "Olihaamal", which means "God grant them rest". Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Alan. With a second, I'd like to speak. Councillor Tarkos?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I would like to endorse the sentiments and expressions performed by my fellow councillor Daniel Allen, and say that, Madam Mayor, our community stands as one with the Muslim community during this difficult time, and that we must rise above and stand against hatred in all its forms. We do this by reaching out to our own community and people and show solidarity and support with them. This is the spirit of Brimbank.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item? No? So... Normally, I wouldn't speak from the chair, but I do want to speak on these items as the mayor and as the leader of the city. So we at Brimbank City Council are shocked by the terrible events that occurred in shock Christchurch, and we would like to pass on our heartfelt sympathy and support to everybody who's been affected by this shocking act of terrorism, wherever they may be. There are no words to adequately express how sorry we are. We have no way of understanding how much this must hurt you. But we stand behind you in firm resolve. We refuse to give in to terrorism and to let it divide us. Instead, as one of the most culturally diverse cities in Australia, we at Brimbank wholeheartedly hold out our arms to New Zealand and Australia's Muslim communities. We condemn, in the strongest possible terms, all types of racial or religious intolerance, discrimination and violence. We urge all of those in positions of responsibility in this country to unit... To demonstrate unity, in similarly condemning intolerance and hatred. This is not a time for equivocating on such matters. Now is a time to make it clear that we stand together in the face of terrible, extreme acts of violence. These events in New Zealand will only bring us closer together. To those affected and to our own communities here, let me make it very clear: we at Brimbank care deeply for you. We stand with you. We will support you through this terrible, terrible time. So thank you, councillors. I'd like to put that motion to the vote. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. So councillors, I also think it is appropriate for council at this point in time to observe a minute's silence in remembrance of the victims. So I might ask everybody to stand, please. You will, if you're able, and we will observe a minute's silence. Thank you, everybody. Okay. So we now move on to item eight on the agenda, which is congratulations. And there are no items of congratulations this evening. So we will move straight on to item number nine, which is public question time. And it's clear, I understand, that we've received one question. Do you remember the public this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The question is from P Thompson, who is in attendance this evening. The question is, will council be writing to the Victorian Commission for gambling and liquor regulation? Objecting to the proposed Dan Murphy outlet to be built right next to the West End Hotel in McIntyre Road in Sunshine. There are already so many outlets that sell liquor within about one kilometre of the proposed site. Surely this is beyond saturation point?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Thompson. So the response is that a planning permit was required for a package of liquor licenses at this site under the Brimbank Planning Scheme. We received a planning application and following a thorough assessment against the decision guidelines within the scheme and public notification of the application, a planning permit was issued in January 2019. On the basis that the proposal has already been considered and approved under delegation from council, it is not anticipated that council will be lodging an objection to the proposed licence to Victorian Commission for Gambling and Liquor Regulation. Thank you. That's all the public questions for this evening. So we will now move on to item number 10, which is petitions. So there are three petitions to be received this evening. So councillors, I'll be asking for a procedural motion to formally receive these petitions individually. So the first item is 10.1, which is Brim Galley Soccer Club Limited Draft Electronic Gambling Policy 2018. So do I have a mover of a motion to receive this petition? Councillor Lancashire? Sorry.
Madam Mayor, move the recommendation as put in the media. It's there, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. And then seconded by councillor David? I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour to receive this petition? Carried. Okay, item number 10.2 is a petition from St Albans Sports Club in relation to the Draft Electronic Gambling Policy 2018. May I have a mover of a motion to receive this petition? Councillor Borg?
I move the motion as per business practice.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Do I have a second for that motion? Councillor Trum? And I'll put that motion to the vote, please. All of those in favour? Carried. Okay. Petition... Oh, item 10.3, and the third petition for this evening is the request for a traffic slow point to be erected at Hopkins Avenue in Kewore. May I have a mover of a motion to receive this petition? Councillor Tarkos?
I'd like to move the motion as put in the papers.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Seconded by councillor Alan. And I will put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay. We're on to item number 11, which is minutes and reports for special committees. And there are no minutes or reports from special committee meetings this evening. So we're moving right on to item number 12, which is officer reports. So there are 15 reports for consideration by councillor Tarnage. I'm starting at item 12.1, which is planning activity update and delegate decisions, February 2019. And do I have a motion, councillors? Yes, councillor Lancashire has a question?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I have a question in relation to the development costs. I note that the February 2019 is 224 million, whereas against the February 2019 is 58 million, which is a massive increase. So if the relevant director could possibly provide some light on that? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. Mr Walsh is here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I am able to provide council with some further information on that. The bulk of the application or the value associated with the application relates to two significant new applications. One for a data centre in Deremit with a value of 60 million, and the other for a residential hotel at Water Gardens on the QIC land with an estimated cost of 16 million. In addition to that, we have two amendments that were received in relation to the pace of development in Duke Street in Sunshine North and to another amendment to our data storage centre again in Deremit. So the accumulated value was about 139 million. So again, we concede significant confidence in the city as a place to invest.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. So answer your question, councillor Lancashire. Are there any other questions or points of clarification? No? Is there a mover or do I have a motion? Councillor Lancashire? Would you like to move the motion, councillor Lancashire?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Move the recommendation in the agenda.
Thank you. And do I have a second for that item? Councillor Trum? And with a move, I'd like to speak to the item.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, I certainly support and reiterate the comments of the director that this... That amount of money being invested in Brimbank does show great confidence in this municipality. So it is excellent to see that sort of development going ahead in this council and the jobs it will create. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. With a second, I'd like to speak to the item. Councillor Trum? No? Any other councillors that want to... Councillor Headitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, I would speak along the same lines as councillor Lancashire, just slightly differently. For me, with my prosperous Brimbank portfolio at hand and the economic development at hand, it's great to see investment in Deremit area and into data centres and so on. We know it's a great place to invest in that type of facility. I guess for us also, with an industry analysis underway and a whole lot of thinking going on about how we can create more investment into Brimbank and bring more jobs into the area. These are great stats, and it shows that, yes, there's a downturn. We see a downturn happening in the property investment sector and various others around the country. But here in Brimbank, we have a really strong, robust investment pattern going on. And it's because we are so well-located, we have so many great spots, and we have a council that's willing to get in behind developers and industrial people and so on to create the type of activity we need to create in this city. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we now move on to item 12.2, which is application P843-2017 for approval of a development plan under Development Plan Overlay Schedule 8 of a site at 112 to 116 Anderson Road in Sunshine. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification before we consider this item? No? Is there a mover to have a motion? Councillor Lancashire? Would you like to move the motion, councillor Lancashire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the recommendation as put.
Thank you. And a second for this? Councillor David? With a move, I'd like to speak to the item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I certainly would. As councillors, we have taken a keen interest in this proposal to convert the occasional chaplain reserve to a premier residential development in the heart of Sunshine. This site is significant for many reasons. Its proximity to the Sunshine Shopping Centre, its proximity to what will become the Sunshine Super Hub, giving its residents an amazing level of public transport access. It joins the H.B. McKay Memorial Gardens. The development covering 2.2 hectares, the articulated built form of this development will provide for a wide variety of family types from one, two and three-bedroom dwellings. This interesting development utilizes reloaded garaging access from laneways, which will reduce the impact of garages on streetscapes. Some of the site will be covered by three- to four-story development, particularly along the Anderson Road frontage. Development along the H.B. McKay Memorial Gardens will be limited to two to three stories, which is appropriate for fronting such a sensitive frontage to a park. The remainder of the site will potentially accommodate nine-story development. The design standards set for this development by our planners in consultation with developers will ensure that a high-quality residential development is provided in close proximity to shops, public transport, which is exactly what we want to see in this municipality. Well done to those involved in this exciting development. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. With a second, I'd like to speak. Councillor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just very briefly, I think there's nobody going through. And because I was aware, it's by council leadership, this development has been with us for a long time now. We had it before us in this chamber, and again, tonight. And I believe this particular site will benefit the McKay Gardens as well, in a way. More safety, security-wise, and everything to go with it. And we welcome the idea to have this development get up as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor David. Councillors, is there anyone else? Councillor Tarkos?
I'd like to echo what's been said. But maybe I would also like to say that the additional safety treatments and requirements to the development plan, which were a concern to me, have been fulfilled by including traffic calming plans such as T-trainments, islands, roadhumps, et cetera. In particular, in point seven of those requirements that walls constructed on the eastern side boundary must be constructed to withstand any collision or derailment by a train. Always thinking of the worst-case scenario. But we need to look at the safety of our community as a priority. And the stages require permits with the developer of TFB, BitTrack and accredited rail transport operators, as well as the increase in the setback in the north-facing balconies on page A307, and that a minimum of five-metre setback is achieved for all built forms along the interface. The additional tree planting in the open space and landscape plan with minimisation of driveways and crossways, as councillor Lancashire mentioned, is excellent. It will allow for appropriate canopy, cover which, Madam Mayor, is integral not only to the overall amenity, but to create a sound buffer wall as well as environmental benefits to this planning application. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Councillor Headitch, would you like to say or speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to add to what's already been said, this particular development has been before us before. There's been a lot of work done on it by council officials, developers, and groups in the community, the French group with the gardens and so on, and the Urban ID community group. I guess for me, it's great to see the development come forward with so much, I guess, agreement around it. There was a lot of argy-bargy to start with, but now we've got to a point where substantially everything is agreed. We have some points that need to be consulted on further. We don't have requirements to consult on this particular one because of the status of the application. But I guess we're, in many ways, hopeful that the relationship that's been formed between developers and community groups and council will continue in that spirit of talking to one another and seeing what can be sorted out to make this one work better and better as it goes along and keeps developing. The proposal overall has changed. It has a nine-story tower proposal in it now, and that's a good thing, given what's happening around the area. Uh, the proposal overall has changed. It has a nine storey tower, uh, proposal in it now, and, uh, that's a good thing given what's happening around the area. We are questioning now high limits and things like that. That's something we need to discuss some more as we go along. But this particular one, as it stands, uh, has the support of most, of, of, uh, I think most of the community with a, with a couple of very minor points to be to be discussed in later stages of development. So, uh, on be, on behalf of, uh, myself, I think the, uh, the work that's been done should be recommended to the council and, uh, it should be, should be, uh, considered in the vein of a very positive, uh, outcome for the local area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hitt. Is there anyone else, any other councillors that would like to speak for or against this motion? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we now move on to item 12.3, which is a planning application, P680-2018, for the construction of five double storied dwellings at 47 Deramet Street, Albion. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? Councilor Hitt, do you have a question? Councillors, any questions or points of clarification on this item? No? Do I have a motion? Councilor Hitt?
Uh, I have a amended motion to move, Madam Mayor, which is, uh, coming up on the screen now. I'd like to move it as proposed in front of the Senate with a, an alternate motion that councillors use a refusal to grant funding permit. Six eighty, P680-2018, for the construction of five double storied dwellings at 47 Deramet Street, Albion, on the polling grounds. As per points one, two, three, four and five.
Thank you, Councilor Hitt. Is there a second up for this motion? Councilor Tacos? Councilor Hitt? Would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this particular development, uh, is one that comes before us in Albion. Uh, as we all know, Albion is a, uh, a garden city that was created by H.B. McKay many years ago and has a great heritage connection to our city. Uh, the subdivision that was put in place is one that revolves around Selwyn Park and as the principal park and has a series of, I guess, octagonal, octagonal, diagonal streets that have elbows in them off the main boulevards. In this particular case, uh, this is on the corner of Deramet Street, the main boulevard and Hutchinson Street, which is a small street with the elbow turn in it. Uh, this particular development proposes five small homes be included on this, uh, corner site. I have, I must say, I have no objection to five small homes on site, so I have, uh, every confidence in, uh, development of small homes as an alternative housing option going forward. My concern in this particular, uh, case is that, uh, this particular site on a corner, on a street, in a subdivision that has been designed, uh, for a, uh, in my view, a, a much smaller residential footprint, uh, creates enormous strains on the local community. One, one, one strain is around character. Uh, when Albion was built, federation homes were the style that was built, and there's been a whole lot of those homes retained in this area. People buy them and renovate them and really enjoy them and do them up. Uh, we have a planning scheme that allows a whole range of, uh, alternative housing to be developed alongside them, and that's okay, uh, to a point, but in this particular situation, this particular location, uh, this area is, uh, fairly heavily federation style homes and with some new development coming in. The character of the new development, uh, it is, it is innovative and new, there's no doubt about that. Uh, but it, but it is five small houses on one particular corner block, and that has a, a real impact on character around that immediate area. Uh, so for me, it, uh, doesn't pass the character test. Uh, also, I think there's a whole range of issues around the impact of five small houses on one corner block on the streetscapes of both Deramet Street and Hutchinson Street. Uh, for example, in Hutchinson Street, there are four crossovers, four, uh, entries for cars. Uh, that creates a lot of concrete. We have a footpath, we have a lot of trees, and we have a, a lot of tar beside it in the road. Uh, a very hot place, and that goes for the entire length of one arm of the elbow street. The five sites also create, I think, difficulties for traffic, safety, flow and also, uh, sightlines. Uh, the site is within about 200 metres of a local school. Uh, there is a lot of traffic at certain points of the day, a lot of car wrecking goes on legally and illegally, and, uh, vehicle movement and, uh, movement of cars in and out of driveways. I went around and tried it myself today. I drove around and around the suburb in different parts of trying to make it work for me, and I, I had difficult, very difficult. Uh, but I think that whole movement of cars, parking and various other things creates the same difficulties. And I think there's a whole range of those sorts of, uh, issues that need to be thought about when these sorts of developments come forward. Uh, again, I'll say I don't have a problem with five small houses on site, but it's got to be the right site and the right area uh, for this type of development. And I don't think this particular, um, proposal does that. There is no development of land because of the impact it has on the, uh, the area around it. I think that's mainly my, uh, my points that I wanted to make tonight, and I commend this alternate motion to the councillors. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hitt. With the second I'd like to speak, Councilor Tacos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd also like to support the alternate motion. Um, I'm also not against, uh, good development. My concern for this is it's an overdevelopment in such a tiny, small space in a very narrow configuration. Uh, as, um, Councilor Hitt pointed out, he went himself today to experiment. Four crossovers on a street with an elbow bend in it made it extremely difficult for him to pull in and out of. Um, putting five double story dwellings in such a small land holding will create a lot of, uh, difficulties with navigation. But when it gets to the peak hours where the school is out and it is going to be, um, it's already, uh, gridlocked, we, I'm imagining lots of kids, uh, following through this street as well with people trying to get in and out of those dwellings. The location of the crossovers will, I believe, make visibility extremely poor and difficult. And when you, uh, um, again, with the schools, the schools being in such a close proximity, safety for me is paramount. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Tacos. Is there any other councillors that would like to speak? Councilor Trum?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not again, but I fully support, um, Councilor Hitt and Councilor Tacos. The thing I'm concerned is about the safety for the children and the family in around the corner and also the school in around. So this one is very important for the local people.
Thank you, Councilor Trum. Councillors, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against? Councilor Langishy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'd like to speak in support of this application as recommended by the planners. The reasons for this are that it is the only a two-storey development and as such is appropriate in a general residential site. Up to three stories, uh, can be allowed in this zone. The proposed development is consistent with the existing character of the area and as such will integrate into the streetscape. The site is just over 400 metres from the Albion station and is close to jobs, services and transport. The design of the dwellings are of high quality. The proposal complies with the car parking requirements of the planning scheme with all car spaces located on site and no, no more than one crossover per dwelling. The garden area required for this development is 30% of the site area. The development achieves 44.7%, well exceeding minimum requirements. Having regard to the above, I support this development and accordingly do not support the alternate motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Langishy. So Councilor Langishy has spoken against the current motion. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item? No? Councilor Hitt, because someone's spoken against your motion, you have the option to, um, the right of reply.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'll be very brief. I think, uh, councillors are playing for on. We heard from both the, uh, the developer who put forward the proposal, who put forward a very good proposal, and, uh, Councilor Langishy has identified some of that in what he said. I think the, uh, we also heard from the community who are identifying a whole range of issues that they have living in an area with such a, uh, I guess, uh, fulsome development of a, of a site with five particular, five particular small homes on, on one corner block. Uh, those issues are real ones. Uh, I think they're around character and around, uh, around traffic and, uh, safety and, uh, movement and streetscape. The, uh, streetscape, the, you know, beautiful boulevard down Deramet, Deramet Street with, you know, great new trees that have all been planted by the council, going into autumn, uh, leaves right now. And then we have the, the op, option of approving a development that takes out half of Hutchinson Street down the side that the development will, will run and puts in a concrete and tar, uh, mainly a concrete and tar solution into the street with a, with a tree or two here and there and a nice garden behind the fence with the street, so, uh, doesn't cut the mustard as far as I'm concerned. So I'd, uh, I'd like to, uh, put that forward as my right of reply and say, yes, this is, you know, we encourage development in this city. We encourage innovative and, and great development, but in this particular case in the Garden City, H.B. McKay's Garden City, with all its heritage and all its, um, I guess, great features, we don't want to see more and more of it lost to what, uh, what can be great developments in many cases, but in this particular case, I think the, the scale affects it badly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hitt. Councillors, uh, Councilor Hitt has closed the debate. So we will now put the item to the vote. So just to confirm that, that we are voting on the alternate motion, which is to refuse the planning permit. Um, so I'll put that up into the vote now. All those in favour? Carried. Okay. So we're now moving on to item number 12.4, which is a governor's report from March 2019. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to the governor's report? Yes, Councilor Hitt?
My, my question is regarding the, uh, St Albans partnership group. Uh, in the last step of, uh, names of a recorder, I was put forward as a portfolio representative of both Sunshine and St Albans, but I'm, I think I'm missing this time because I'm not sure why. The other, the other reason for asking the question is that Councilor Tacos also has mentioned that, uh, she doesn't attend necessarily all the time, uh, because of working and so on, so it might be handy to her.
Okay. Um, I'm just going to refer to governor's for one moment, please. Thank you, Councilor Hitt. So, um, sorry, the reason I did that is it's not really a, a question for our governor's manager. It's more a question for councillors in terms of, um, working through who's on what committee. Um, one of the options that we have, which I open up to the, the councils, is to defer that particular item so that we can finalise who's, who's in there because there is terms of reference associated with that item. So if you're, if we're happy to take that out, consider it next month? Yes? Yep, okay. And I understand we might be doing that with another committee as well, the CEO performance committee, because there's still some questions around that and the terms of reference as well. So are there any other, councillors, are there any other questions or points of clarification in relation to the governor's report before we move through a motion? No? Okay. So do I have a motion? Does somebody have a motion that they would like to? Councilor Borg?
I'll move the motion as presented in the business papers.
Okay.
Just a point or a question again. Um, we have a, a part of the, uh, motion includes, uh, uh, forward the, uh, employment matters. Is that going up now, because of what was just said?
Can we just deal with the motion and then we'll come to the question? Because we're in the middle of a motion. So Councilor Borg has moved the motion as printed on the screen. Do I have a second up for the motion? Councilor Trum? So? Councilor Borg, we'll just get the motion on going and then we'll go back to the question. Councilor Borg, would you like to, do you, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. This report is presented to council on a monthly basis, and, um, one of the highlights of, uh, this report is the, uh, committees and portfolios update at the ordinary council meeting on the 19th of February, comes to, uh, 2019. Council re, resolved the appointments of our representative delegates to the committees for the, the period from 28th February 2019. And since then, there were some amendments that have been made and it's important to take note of them. Um, another highlight is the memorandum of understanding between the Melbourne Airport and, um, and council, more specifically between Australian Pacific Airports Corporation Limited. The MOU will create a framework for engagement and information sharing between the two parties. It is important for these two parties to work together transparently and comparatively on subjects as such as community engagement, public amenity, environmental impacts and the Melbourne Airport regulating to maximise the benefits for the shared committees and stakeholders on both parties. As already alluded, uh, this report also includes the chief officer, executive officer employment matters. Now, at this stage, I'm not sure how we sit considering the question that has been raised by council, uh, by Councilor Hitt. To attend to that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Borg. Does the second, second I'd like to speak to the motion queue, Councilor Trum? No? Okay. Councilor Hitt, sorry, would you like to ask for a question?
Yeah, sure. My question was really regarding the, uh, the points in the, uh, in the resolution that, uh, related to the CEO's, uh, employment matchup. Uh, we were, indeed, we were adopting the final draft of the Chief Executive Employment Matters Committee Terms of Reference, Detention Three, and you just made mention that we might be defrauded.
Yes. So, um, Councilor Hitt, there were some questions surrounding representation of Taylor's Board of Councillors on that committee. Um, so that decision has not been finalised yet, so the suggestion was to defer that until a following month with the CEO Performance Committee, as it is now standing in place until we resolve otherwise.
They can't have this particular motion?
It's been removed from the motion on the screen. Okay. So, um, the item D on the report hasn't been removed and the motion has been moved and seconded. So, um, if we would, if we would like to adjust the motion now, we'd need someone to propose an amendment. Councilor Hitt?
Propose that, uh, item D to be removed from the, uh, the motion and an alternate motion created with it.
Thank you, Councilor Hitt. Do I have a second up for the amendment? Councilor Langishy? So I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna ask for a vote now, which is to amend this motion to remove item D, which is the CEO Terms of Reference. So all those in favour? Carried. So we're now, this now becomes a substantive motion. Are there any questions or points of clarification on that item? No? Would anyone else like to speak to the governor's report in general? No? Okay. So we're voting on the substantive motion. I'll put it to the vote now. All those in favour? Carried. Okay. We got that. So we now move on to item 12.5, which is the Council Plan Action Plan 2018 to 2019 Second Quarter Progress Report. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to that item? No? Councillors, are there a motion for this item? Councilor Borg?
I'll move the motion as a pair of the business papers.
Thank you, Councilor Borg. Um, councillors, is there a second up for the motion? Councilor Tacos? And Councilor Borg, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As the councillor for, uh, People Portfolio, it gives me great pleasure to present this progress report to council. This is a, um, highly detailed
This is a highly detailed report that includes the actions that have been taken and, and others that have been completed or still in progress. The percentage of the progress is, is also included. And there are a number of highlights that range from the, uh, evaluation of the press pleading support programme that has been completed, and it's, it's a great pleasure to know that funding has been confirmed to further explain, uh, extend this, uh, programme. A number of initiations, uh, initiatives from the Brimbank cultural strategy are also progressing. Age Fragility City Plan actions continue to be implemented, key achievements delivered within the Dynamic Young Citizens Programme, and this goes on and on. Thank you for all the work that the, the team are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Would the second elect to speak? Councillor Tacos?
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, I've got to echo what councillor Borg has just said, and madam mayor, back in two thousand and seventeen, this council adopted a bold council plan incorporating the aspirations, um, and the needs of our community. And what they told us is they want four goals embedded in our council plan, and those goals include being an inclusive community, being a livable community, being a prosperous community, and an innovative and responsive, uh, community with a community first, um, mantra. As of December the two, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and eighteen, uh, many of these actions are now com- uh, completed or on their way to being, progressing to be completed, which is really encouraging. Many of councillors here find threads of these actions filtering through their portfolios, and this is where the real, um, I guess, from our perspective, the real work comes into actioning this, uh, um, uh, bold council plan. For me, some of the key issues are the draft electronic gambling policy, in which, uh, we are currently reviewing, uh, the advocacy for this and also going out to community consultation. The reconciliation, reconciliation action plan, another very key, um, uh, policy, a report establishing the strategic directions of the draft car parking, a very hot topic at the moment, but that's also, uh, going out for community consultation, just three of the many, uh, that I, you know, I could go on to capture, but, um, the community is very involved in our action, um, our action plan as well. We are getting through some very big and important issues and continue to put the community first and at the forefront of everything we do. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tacos. Councillors, is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this? Councillor Headitch?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd like to echo what's gone before me in terms of councillors Tacos and Borg. Um, I just wanted to talk briefly about the goal of a prosperous community, and we've, we've talked about it already to some extent in earlier, in earlier, uh, items. Um, I'm looking at the strategy, and the strategy has, uh, some really key points. I'll just go through three or four of them. Developing a community of lifelong learners, uh, how important that is for a city like ours, where we know that there's going to be significant change, that jobs and employment will change over time, and it's important that we continue to learn, uh, new skills and develop. We also need to learn just to, you know, I guess, survive human life. It's a, it's a difficult, difficult world we live in these days, lots of pressures on families and individuals, children and so on, and, uh, learning, uh, learning new skills, planning, doing all sorts of different things, uh, are things that we need to really promote as a council. But also, we also have strategies to advocate for improved access to and provision of education for lifelong learning opportunities, facilitating participation in employment and education, and ensuring Brimbank's industrial areas can prosper and help facilitate a more, uh, diverse industry base. Those particular, uh, strategies for me are really fundamental ones that this city is to develop over the coming decades. And, uh, I think, uh, from a, a council perspective, we're doing a whole lot of work, and we're talking and engaging with various others, uh, in all sorts, at all sorts of levels, from the mayor and the CEO down, and how good that is. It's, uh, there's a real burst of energy happening around the city and you can feel it, and, uh, I thank everyone for their efforts, and, uh, I thank the officers also for the great work they're doing on this particular plan and, uh, the implementation of a variety of strategies and actions. It's terrific work. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headitch. Councillors, is there anyone else? Councillor Fan, do you like to speak?
Just a few words. When I first came to council, I didn't know, well, was it a council plan for, how do I see it coming true? Now, more than ever, I can see that, you know, something that we hear from community, we bring it in, or even just a simple thought, that people on the table start to, um, be in action, or be in planning, or be completed. And I am so glad to, to see that in real life, and thank you for all the, uh, staff and officers involved.
Thank you, councillor Fan. Councillors, any other speakers to this item? Or against? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carriage. Okay, we're now moving on to item twelve point six, which is councillor portfolios quarterly report November two thousand and eighteen to February two thousand and nineteen. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification on this item? No? Is there a motion? Councillors? Councillor Headitch?
Do that, do that for the business papers.
Thank you, councillor Headitch. Is there a second for this item? Councillor Borg? And would you like to speak to the item?
Thank you, madam mayor. Yes, I would like to speak to the item. Arts in our communities, as we all know, are a really important part of it. Uh, we have a, uh...
Sorry? Councillor Headitch, we're twelve point six.
Oh, sorry, portfolios, sorry. Um, madam mayor, I would like to, uh, say that the, uh, portfolio system that we have, uh, is, is a really good one and an emerging one. We, uh, we have, uh, I guess incrementally developed over the last twelve months, and we've got to a point now where we're really able to sit down and focus on the particular items that we need to focus on. Um, in my particular case, as I mentioned, uh, prosperous Brimbank, in conjunction with councillor David earlier, now we're dividing out into, uh, ten portfolios and, and every councillor is having a crack at something. Uh, for me, the portfolio system is working well. Um, we're starting to get, uh, the information flowing through, the case receiving information and so on, uh, but we also, uh, I think, uh, need to have a think about how we bring some of that together with joint sessions, uh, and we're talking about that with early hastings. The area, but, uh, the portfolio is, I think everyone who's doing their particular pieces of work are enjoying what's happening with them, and, uh, uh, to the officers and all the, all the staff involved in servicing them, uh, really well done, uh, it's coming together nicely and will help us enormously as we get into this really busy period that's coming up with, uh, you know, miles and various other big projects and investments coming forward. So well done, CEO, well done, officers, well done councillors for getting in there and having a crack at something new, and, uh, we're really going forward with it. Thank you.
Well done, councillor Headitch. Councillor Borg, would you like to speak to this item?
I just want to add to what councillor Headitch has said, how much I have learnt at the personal level from these portfolios, is even also from the other councillors' portfolios. We do get a lot of opportunities to chat over a capa in the knowledge of level two, and we discuss, uh, the issues that we are dealing with, uh, as they, as they come through, throughout, uh, uh, throughout the spirit of time. It certainly is a great pleasure, um, for me to learn, uh, not only from my own portfolio, but also from the other councillors' portfolios, and thank you Borg for all the stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Councillors, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Councillor Fan?
I think each, in eleven of us came in, as councillor, came into this council, um, with different knowledge level, different interests, and different, uh, passion, but this portfolio system give us the possibility to become a knowledge champion and to empower strongly what we want to do and grow as our passion.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Fan. Councillor Chong, did I say that you're handling one top? Would you like to speak?
Thank you, madam mayor. Yeah, I would like to ask on before the other council of pudding, but I, I believe with the portfolio is a lot of support, and we learn from the start, so I am curious to get more involved. And, um, also, I just would like, because I just had the portfolio meeting this afternoon, Pria, about sustainability, and we are now, it's the, the project is like components, this will be launched first of April, and in carry for first three hundred family in Brimbank Airport, so I just would like to, and thank you very much for the director, and ask my best, despite all the hard working for the sustainability team. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Chong. Councillors, is there anyone else who would like to speak? This item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carriage. Okay, so we're now moving on to item twelve point seven, which is arts advisory committee terms of reference. So councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Do I have a move up? Do I have a motion? Councillor Allen?
As printed in the business papers.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Is there a second for this item? Councillor Fan? I'm going to move along to speak. Oh, sorry, councillor Allen, you need to appoint, um, a chair and two councillors to be part of the committee?
Give me a second. Sorry, there is no two seconds.
So... So, uh, councillors, from what I'm understanding, we have not put forward any recommendations in relation to appointments for these committees, so we might want to defer this item? Good. Councillor Fan, do you have a question?
Some, like clarification, I think I was appointed as the chair for this committee, uh, when the, um, obviously it's that committee was late, who ends, so...
Thank you. Councillors, I wonder if, um, I have a, um... A motion, we're really a motion table. Okay. Councillors, sorry, we need to, so we have a motion on the table, um, we need to, we need to allow that motion to lapse, so I'm going to call for votes on that. Um, so all those, so not all, but if you would like the item, you'd like to move a vote against it. So all those in favour of the motion that's on the table now? All those against? Motion lost. Do I have a motion to defer this particular item? Councillor Lakey?
Um, Chair, um, I, I believe we might have three names, and that's such a good motion up with three names. And I would be clear to do that if that were acceptable.
Councillors, I wonder if, um, someone may move a motion to suspend standing orders so that we might finalise the committee memberships? Councillor Headitch? Thank you. Is there a second for that? Item, councillor Borg? All those in favour of suspending standing orders? Thank you. Carriage. So we're going to suspend standing orders at eight oh five PM. Standing orders at eight oh six PM. Thank you. Uh, councillors, well, my understanding is that we are looking for a motion to defer this item until our next council meeting. Councillor Headitch?
If I measure it third?
Thank you. Councillor David has seconded that item. Councillors, this is a procedural item, so there is no, um, debate, uh, so I'll put it straight to the vote. All those in favour? Carriage. Okay. So we are now moving on to item number twelve point eight, which is the draft response strategy to Western Rail Plan, March two thousand and nineteen. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a move up or motion? Councillor Tacos? Would you like to move the motion?
I'd like to move the motion as put in the business papers. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tacos, and a second, uh, councillor Headitch. And councillor Tacos, would you like to speak to the item?
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, um, madam mayor, this is a big key investment piece for our municipality. It cannot be underestimated, the value it will bring to Brimbank. Um, point one, two new electrified metro lines to Melton and Windervale with possible new stations and incorporation into the suburban rail loop. Point two, additional tracks between Sunshine and the CBD to run extra services including inbound trains and integrated with the airport rail link. And finally, point three, fast rail to Geelong and Ballarat, including potential full electrification of these lines. Madam mayor, for the next few years, Sunshine and surrounds will be a busy place with the delivery of the Western Rail Plan, the Sunshine Super Hub, and the Melbourne Airport rail link. This will involve a range of key government agency stakeholders working across a whole range of complex projects that will create immense opportunities and impacts for a number of years to our Brimbank. Whilst council is not, um, the delivery agent, what our response strategy is that we have a seat at the table so we can pursue our priorities and outcomes and leverage the maximize, and ma- maximize the benefits for the commu- for our Brimbank community, and also to mitigate any potential amenity impacts. One of the key and exciting propositions is that we ask the honorary Jacinta Allen, Minister for Transport Infrastructure, to establish a business, jobs, and skills working group to leverage projects, strategic, and social opportunities for our community, and that Sunshine Super Hub become part of a priority precinct. Madam mayor, it is indeed an exciting time to be living in Brimbank, um, as we transition into the heart of the West and become a gateway to the world, a pivot point where people, businesses invest time, uh, where people stop, inquire, stay, explore, and spend. It is also paramount that we take our whole community, community on this journey with us by keeping them informed and inviting their feedback on what appears to be a limitless, limitless opportunities at our door, but also to protect and preserve our uniqueness in all this and our magic, the qualities that make Brimbank the heart of the West. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tacos. Uh, with a second to like to speak, councillor Headitch?
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, I echo all that councillor Tacos has said, uh, this project, uh, has been coming along in one form or another since the life of this council began, and, uh, it is great to see tonight, uh, this piece of work in the deck. Uh, congratulations to, uh, the director Kelvin Walsh on pulling together and the CEO, uh, who pulled together an enormous amount of activity that's been going on for the last six or eight months, uh, in terms of engaging with stakeholders, uh, within government, within, uh, within industry and so on, as, as well as, uh, councillors and various other councils around the West. Uh, this is a big project and a big plan, and, uh, it has enormous impacts, uh, as we said, uh, councillor Tacos has said, it's unprecedented in terms of investment and impact. And for us, I think as a council, that seat at the table is so important. There'll be the railway projects and the, uh, the governance around that, which we won't have a lot of say over, but we do need to have our voice loud and clear at the table, uh, putting our ask there in front of, uh, in front of those who are making the decisions. That ask has to be informed by really strong community engagement, and this particular response puts that forward as a, as a clear, um, uh, outcome that this community is looking for and this council is looking for, and, uh, I congratulate, uh, council on that. I think the other part to it is, uh, there will be the railway projects, but there will also be the, uh, the jobs and, uh, and communities, uh, part to it, uh, regional part to it, which is another government department's responsibility, but this is where council comes into its own, I believe, and where we can have the most impact in terms of that additionality that will go around, uh, the railway projects, those things in the environment, in the community, housing, you know, jobs, business development, economic development, uh, environmental, uh, improvements that can come around the creeks and the rivers and so on as the, as the railway projects cross them. I think there's a whole range of opportunity in this, and, uh, this is a really strong response, uh, that's come, I think, with a lot of thought and a lot of conversation, and, uh... and a real lot of uh desire to go out there and talk to the community in all its forms and it was great to hear the departments around the table here the other night when we had our briefing saying that they wanted to be part of council as well in going out and doing that and uh working in partnership with us. So I'm really encouraged by the um, I guess, the involvement of those government departments and the way they want to work with us and work with community to get the best possible outcomes for Brimbank and the wider west and Victoria more uh more widely as well. Uh I guess for me, I congratulate again everyone involved. This has been a fabulous piece of work and I think the test of it now will be the consultation. We'll go out for four weeks, we're going out in a period that's going to hit Easter and Anzac maybe and Anzac and all those sorts of things, but uh four weeks is a significant piece of time. Uh we should be able, if we uh shape this right and uh do the engagement right, get out there amongst the various stakeholders and get really strong feedback. Because we need that, we need that to inform our, our response. But again, congratulations all round. Great piece of work. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hitt. Uh councillors, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this particular item? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now on to item twelve point nine, which is the draft Sunshine Station Super Hub Urban Design Principles. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this particular item? No? Do I have a motion for this item? Councillor Hitt?
Move the as per business papers.
Thank you councillor Hitt, and a second, councillor Tarkos, would the mover like to speak to the motion?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, we've had a number of conversations about the importance of urban design principles as we go forward in this particular operation. Amenity outcomes are going to be very important. Uh we've had, had our issues with the current station that separates the city uh and it has a number of amenity issues around it at the moment in terms of landscaping and various other features. We do need to make sure that this new uh super hub uh cuts the mustard, as we keep saying, uh that it delivers what we need delivered as a community and it enhances our community going forward. The, the, the team at the council here and I put forward a really good set of urban design principles as a a starting point to go out to consult with the community about and have a conversation about what's needed to bring about the best possible amenity around the station and, and for the city, and for the precinct more generally. So I commend them to councillors.
Thank you councillor Hitt. With a second to like to speak, councillor Tarkos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh just to echo what councillor Hitt said, but also just to uh add some of these key urban design principles that are being discussed. Deli- uh some of the key uh principles are deliver a holistic and integrated uh redevelopment, um create a sense of place, a sunshine vibe, I think, is what people are saying. Uh design a legible station precinct, something, a place where people can come out of the station and know where they need to go. Maximize the economic development opportunities, so the jobs um that can be created out of such as Sunshine Super Hub. Retain, enhance, expand pedestrian linkages, um integrate local and regional cycle uh connections as well. So preserving the cycle and enhancing it. Engage with the community at every point, create a sustainable precinct. So the importance of having um environmental um and enough trees as well. Prioritize the safety and the design and minimize the physical, visual and um acoustic potential impacts to the surrounding community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tarkos. Councillors, is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against this particular item? No? I'll put the item to vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, so councillors, um as I wish to speak to the next item of business, I have a move out of a procedural motion to appoint the deputy mayor as the temporary, temporary chair of the council meeting for consideration of item twelve point ten, which is level crossing removals on the Ballarat Rail Line and New Deer Park Train Station. Is there a um a move or a motion? Councillor Hitt? Thank you councillor Hitt. Is there a second for that item? Councillor Trum, all those in favour? Carried, thank you.
Thank you councillors, uh item number twelve point ten, that's level crossing removals of Ballarat Rail Line and New Deer Park Train Station. The mayor, councillor Jacinta Kongiff, did put this motion, would you like to fly in and read it?
Thank you councillor David. I'd like to uh move the motion as put in the business papers.
Thank you. Someone second up please? Councillor Trum? Would, would you like to fly in and speak?
I would. Thank you councillor David. And hello councillors. Last year, as you all know, we um cancelled a really strong community campaign to faster and reduce the dangers we can tested level crossings along the Ballarat Rail Line, uh including Robinsons Road, Station Road and Fitzgerald Road. Um we, we had a huge number of concerns around that, but we did a lot of research. Um and we found that during peak hours in the morning, the, the boom gates were down for thirty or forty minutes at a time. Um there was horrendous traffic build up, the community were up in arms around there. We had buses getting stuck at Station Street, Fitzgerald Road. And we actually ran a video, which I think is probably still available on our website, of a number of drivers taking dangerous evasive action to get around them, including driving around the boom gates. We had pedestrians running across the boom gates, there's all sorts of things going on there that were um endangering to, to life. So we um, we knew that there was a need there and we ran a campaign. Um in June last year, many of you will remember that we, we went to the level crossings at seven o'clock in the morning and we invited about we invited a range of MPs and candidates in the upcoming state election to come and witness firsthand um the chaos that was caused by those little crossings. It was a freezing cold misty morning, but we had a good turnout and a great opportunity for us to speak to the local community there as well about their frustrations. Um and to hear about, about those concerns. And then on the back of that, we, as a council, decided to start a petition. Now, I have to, I have to commend um our deputy mayor councillor David, who who took a lead role in that petition, um and my fellow ward councillors, councillor Fan, um and I stood out at Jeramet Village collecting signatures. We had a huge number of community members stand up as well and we issued petition packs, I think. We sent about seventy-five different um petition packs to the community and we got three and a half thousand signatures back, um which was a really good outcome within a three week period. We put all those together and we presented those to uh the member for St Albans, Natalie Sullivan, who, who then went in and advocated for us in the, in the calling for the level crossing removals. So I have to say a big thank you to the local businesses and the communities. A number of local businesses had it on their, on their uh counters, in their windows. I know there was a couple of real estate agents in the Deer Park Village. Oh, there was a number of um uh businesses, particularly in Jeramet Village, that, that collected signatures for us as well. So I'm sure that everyone here knows that after that, that campaign and all of those signatures, we, we were recorded when the, the Andrew's government uh announced just days before the election that they would include um these three level crossings in the new list. Um to the, that ended twenty-five additional crossings to the fifty that, that already committed to and they are now on their way out. So there was a lot of advocacy work that went into achieving these outcomes. A big thank you to our community and businesses and also a big thank you to our state MPs who got in there and, and and petitioned for us to get that over the line. So it, it with the announcement, it's considered appropriate right now for us to develop, as we did for other um changes in the rail, uh regional rail links and level crossing removals in St Albans and, and Sydney that we developed some urban design principles to get the best, best outcomes for Brimbank. And that is what this motion is all about. So um I commend the motion and, and the work that is to come and look forward to consulting with the community on what that looks like as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um councillor Trum, back to speak? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you Chair. I support anything from councillor Lucilla in the speak. I also is like um congratulation all the hard work from the councillor Lucilla and councillor David for also we get involved and I think this project, we get involved with a lot of members for the community or also all the different organisation to have this project in the, I know it's long term to go, but to spark, we are really successful and happy to work in to get the, uh once again, congratulations special. Uh councillor Lucilla, she have very young children, get up early in the morning, stay in the, at the railway station, take the photo and encourage us. So we really think of all the hard work of you. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Trum. Any other comments councillors? Councillor Hitt, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Uh for me, I'd like to also echo the words that have been spoken and congratulate all the councillors involved to got behind the mayor and councillor David for his work with the petition and various other councillors in the, in the ward, councillor Fan, councillor Borg and, and many others who are going behind it. Uh I think what it, what it did to me was demonstrate yet again how people power works so well. Uh we had a council that was prepared to go out and stand up and speak out for what it believed in in terms of uh writing a, a very long running uh problem that had been happening in the community. And it went out and engaged community and engaged the other key stakeholders, the MPs and so on in a really well thought out and considered way. And so I congratulate all those involved, the officers, the CEO, the mayor, the councillors and various others who helped us put together such a, a really good strategy. It was well run, it was smart, it was evidence informed and it worked. And I think that's the learning. Uh we do as a council have a lot of a lot of clout when we uh get our act together with our community and work in, in close hand and with them to achieve outcomes. And I can only encourage us to do more of this as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hitt. Any other comments councillors? If not, I'm free to go. All those in favour? Against, unanimous in party. Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on to item twelve point eleven and I understand that we have a conflict of interest. Councillor Fan?
Yeah, I would like to declare a indirect conflict of interest that um my family have this in, in the area.
Thank you councillor Fan. We just make a note in the minutes that councillor Fan left the room at eight twenty-five P M. So councillors, um are there any, so item twelve point eleven is Alfreda Street Civic Plaza Project, March two thousand and nineteen update. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Councillor Tarkos?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I, I do have a question to the officer in regards to changes to traffic um in Alfreda Street with this proposed um civic plaza project. There is a change to traffic entry into Alfreda Street. Can I seek clarification from the officer as to uh what, what this traffic change will mean? Thank you.
Mister Whiteside, would you like to speak?
Uh yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the, the proposal looks at um creation of a civic plaza in the south end of Alfreda Street. Essentially what that means is uh removing the two separate entry and exit at the moment, uh which is currently separated by what is the pop-up park, uh where there's also the old, what was the old bus interchange. Uh the functional layout plan, this attachment three talks about still maintaining an entry off uh main road into Alfreda Street and also maintaining exiting out of Alfreda Street into main road. It doesn't change some of the movements, uh the right turn from main road into Alfreda will be removed, which is, has been supported by BIC roads. Um essentially it still provides access, but streamlines that approach. It also deals with some of the issues in relation to the bus stop, uh and essentially that's the, that's the proposal on the table. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Whiteside. Councillors, are there any other questions or points of clarification on this particular item? Um do we have a motion for this item? Councillor Tarkos?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to put the motion as put in the business papers. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tarkos. A second, councillor Allen? And councillor Tarkos, would you like to speak to this motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the proposed civic plaza um to go to Alfreda Street will be built on the side of the, the site of the former St Albans Bus Interchange. A place that is desperately in need of activation at the moment. The draft Alfreda Street uh civic plaza uh plan will include large shaded trees, uh garden beds, a performance stage for events, picnic, more picnic tables and chairs. Um at the moment, Madam Mayor, there are, it is quite problematic in that it is attracting a lot of antisocial behaviours and activation is uh desperately needed in this area and it's been called on for many, many years and long overdue. The community in its um, in its own feedback indicated in submissions that it wanted vibrant colours um that activate that area. It wants high quality materials, um with the removing of uh potentially car access, uh more tree canopy and greenery, more seating and shelter. Um and keeping the piano, the piano has been a really uh, it's attracted a lot of people and um and, and a, a lot of people have said uh at the start that it would get vandalized and destroyed within weeks, but it's still standing there and there's an utmost respect by the community for this piano. Um more disabled parking is needed in the area and the management obviously of um the antisocial behaviours will, I think, uh be in line with the activa- the activation through this uh fantastic civic plaza project. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tarkos. With the second I'd like to speak to the motion, councillor Allen?
Thank you. Um I just want to say, yeah, just judging by the design that's come through, it's a really positive outcome for the St Albans community. It's given a new lease of life to the south end of Alfreda Street. I'd like to thank the community for their input and their suggestions on the draft and that we look forward to what comes next for the second phase. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Allen. Councillors, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against? Councillor Borg?
Having lived in St Albans um for over forty years, I'm very familiar with this area and it's great to see its gradual development, to see where it stands at the moment, even with the pop-up um park there. Um it's wonderful to see and as councillor Tarkos mentioned, the, the piano, it's uh, is great to see uh people of various age groups actually having a go at it. And it's about time that we see this part of St Albans revitalized um because it will be of a great benefit to the community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Borg. Councillors, are there any other comments in relation to this item? It might be improper for me to do so, but I do need to ask a question, Mister Whiteside, on this item. So I understand that um that there were a number of businesses that were unsure about the, the concept plans because of the nature of traffic in a particular area and that they had an issue that it may impact their businesses. What, after we adopt this, how do, what provisions have we got to make sure that um that should we, should these businesses experience any detrimental impacts, have we addressed them?
Uh tha- thank you, Madam Mayor, for the question. Um so the process from here with council results to adopt the uh the functional layout plan as proposed in the business papers. Uh I think we would prepare detailed uh design plans and we would then propose to go and tender on that. Uh in terms of how we manage the construction, ultimately in a report, we come back to council to award that. It might not be dissimilar to any other works that we do in any of the other town centres where we have to manage impacts of construction. It's fair for me to say that, yes, there are impacts of construction. Uh sometimes I like to say there is sometimes short-term pain for a longer term gain. Um uh we will obviously work with the trade group, the overall trade group and the directly affected traders as best we can uh to try and minimize those interruptions and to try and minimize uh interruption on their trade. Uh but with any uh project in a town centre, then ultimately will be some disturbance. We just have to work with the traders to try and minimize it as best we can.
Sorry, Mister Whiteside, I um, it wasn't particularly during the construction phase. It was the commenting here in terms of the summary was that the businesses were concerned about the traffic flow in the design.
Yes, so we, as part of the consultation, there was some concerns raised by a small number of traders in relation to the concerns around the change in the, the traffic approach to this unified plaza. So at the moment, we've got a pop-up park in the middle of the two access points. Uh, to be able to have a proper and well considered civic plaza, the proposal is to reorientate the entrance and exit arrangements as per the plan. Um, from our perspective, once officers had explained to the traders that the e- e- access and entry out of a street was still being maintained, but adjusted, there seemed to be more acceptance. I think the concern initially was that there wouldn't be any uh entry or exit through that approach. Um, I suspect, and there's no guarantee, but I suspect that um, that the activation of that space in the civic plaza in the future will provide more people and more vibrancy and potentially could provide benefits uh for joining traders. No guarantees, but from my perspective, that's potential outcome.
Thank you, Mister Whiteside. Any other questions or comments or? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now, sorry, we'll just wait for Councilor Fan to re-enter the room. Welcome back, Councilor Fan. We're now moving on to item number twelve point twelve, which is the proposal to rename McGrath Place Sunshine North to Bent Then Place. Now, councillors, I understand um that there might be some questions around this item and that there might be a request to defer. Okay, so Councilor David is moving to defer this item to the next ordinary meeting of council. And to we have some more information. Councilor Fan, did you want to second that motion? Thank you. Um. I'll, I'll just put it straight to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we are now at item twelve point thirteen, which is contract number nineteen dash two six four two, the Lakes Reserve Flagship Park Upgrade. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Do we have a motion? Councilor Langsche, do you like to move the motion?
Sir, Madam Mayor, I move the recommendation in the agenda.
Thank you, Councilor Langsche. Is there a second for this item? Councilor Borg, would the member like to speak to the item? No? Would the second like to speak? Councillors, is there any further discussion on this particular item? No? I'll put it straight to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're at item twelve point one four, which is contract number nineteen dash two six oh five. The construction of new sports and community pavilion at Errington Reserve in St Albans. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this particular item? No? Is there a motion? Councilor Tappos?
I'd like to put the motion as per business papers. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there a second for this item? Councilor Fan, would the member like to speak to the item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Madam Mayor, the sports pavilion at Errington Reserve, both you and uh all councillors would agree is quite dilapidated, is uh in a dilapidated state and has been for many years in urgent need of an upgrade, as it is not fit for purpose. The demolition and construction of a new pavilion is so needed and overdue. It is in many ways the heart and soul of St Albans, buffered by um the play centre and the recently built magnificent stack. Uh, I congratulate this council for making the sports facility upgrades one of our top priorities in our council plan. St Albans is a high needs area where kids and adults are looking for passive and structured recreation opportunities. The construction of phase two will provide an increased level of opportunities for the whole community to engage in sports, but not just sports, but other social activities in and around stack. Again, Madam Mayor, as part of the redevelopment and phase two of Errington Reserve, there will be the construction of four new tennis courts and multi-use park court sports area. Welcome news for the tennis club and much needed in our community. I will add that all sports clubs were consulted in this process and actively involved in the planning. Thank you to the director and all involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Tappos. Would the second like to speak to this item? No? Is there any other councillors that would like to speak for or against this particular item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to twelve point one five, which is contract number one nine dash two six two two. The construction of four new tennis courts and multi-use hard court sports area. Errington Reserve in St Albans. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this particular item? No? Is there a motion, councillors? Councilor Tappos?
I'd like to put the motion as put in the business papers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Tappos. Is there a second for the motion? Councilor Fan, would the member like to speak to the motion?
Madam Mayor, I believe I have most of it in the previous uh notes except to say, yes, the tennis club will be most happy with this uh new uh development. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Tappos. Would the second like to speak? Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Councilor Hetch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I'd just like to add that what a great investment in St Albans. The um Errington Reserve has been a uh, a place where people in, in Brimbank, uh people in St Albans have gathered for many years. And it's great to see this refreshing, this revitalising of, of sports and, and community facilities in the area. What a fabulous reserve we have now, with stack on one side and uh, you know, various sporting options and, and all sorts of uh play and, and other options um available. This is a firm complex that will be in a very short period of time. And I think congratulations to all involved in it for that.
Thank you, Councilor Hetch. Councillors, if there's no more comments, uh I'll put it straight to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, that's all of the office reports for this evening. So we're now moving on to item thirteen, which is notices of motion. There are two notices of motion in tonight's agenda. So item thirteen point one is notice of motion in relation to the evaluation of current waste and resource recovery services. Um, councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this particular item? No? Would you like to?
Madam Mayor, I would like to put the motion as put before us in the mo- uh business papers. Would you like me to read it out or are you happy with it? Uh, the council writes to the Honorary Lily Dambrosio, N P State Minister for the Energy, Environment and Climate Change, requesting that the state government re-evaluate the current provision of waste and resource recovery service with a view to boost their leadership and investment.
Thank you, Councilor Tappos. Is there a second for this motion? Councilor Hetch, would the member like to speak to the motion?
Madam Mayor, I, I raise this motion, uh, given the current concern the community has uh with the direction of waste management and resource recovery here in uh Brimbank, but also in the great, greater Victoria. I understand that over ninety percent of Victoria's curbside recycling is currently processed by three recyclers who largely re- rely on overseas markets to support their business model, model. Last year's decision by China to change its national sword policy to restrict the importation of certain recyclable materials into China has placed the recycling industry under extreme pressure and some would say a crisis. Recently, the Victorian um Environment Protection Authority issued a minor works pollution abatement notice to S K M Recycling, which receives about half of Victoria's curbside recycling, including from council across three sites. The notice saw temporary closure of S K M recycling processing facilities at its Coleroo and Laverton sites. And councils were left with no other viable option than to send recyclables all to landfill. And I know that this was a great concern to our community. Based on these issues, attention has turned to the systemic issues with the current provision of waste and resource recovery services in Victoria and Australia. And arguably, a lack of leadership and underinvestment by successive state and federal governments in the resource recovery uh sector to actually provide us with a strategy and long-term plan. Notably, the Victorian Government, through the municipal and industrial landfill levy, has a balance of over five hundred million dollars in the sustainability fund. As of the thirty first of December two thousand and seventeen, and the Victoria Auditor General Report into landfill levy released in two thousand and eighteen noted that a significant quote, a significant proportion of funds have remained unspent over many years, representing an opportunity cost. How long do we have to wait before we can access these funds to actually uh have some leadership on this um crisis before us? Given the current situation, it is a timely call on the Victorian Government to properly re-evaluate the current provision of waste disposal and recycling, the impact of waste levies and the capacity, considering issues of location, scale, technology and environmental health, to address the ongoing waste disposal issues for commercial, industrial, ha- household and particularly hazardous waste, taking into account the following. One, the role of advanced waste processing technology in addressing waste disposal needs and the resulting impact on future reci- recycling industry. Two, current regulatory standards, guidelines and policy statements oversighting advanced waste processing technology. Three, the risks of future monopolisation in markets for waste disposal and the potential to enable a circular economy, a model that represents to us probably the best model for our community. Four, the transport of all classifications of waste and recyclable materials out of Victoria and the consequences for waste disposal, government revenue and environment programmes, employment, roads, transport routes and the environment. And finally, the last point, the prevalence and scale of illegal dumping across Victoria. Now, we know that this is an endemic problem in Brimbank, but not just Brimbank, Hume and surrounding areas. And the actions of the Victorian E- Environmental Protection Authority, not just to react to it, but to actually start being proactive. And to be proactive, we actually need the resources available to us to work with them. Um, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Tappos. The second I'd like to speak to the motion, Councilor Hetch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just briefly, I echo Counselor Tappos's comments. For me, uh, this process has been going on for a while. Uh, we've, we've known about it and we've had various presentations on waste of energy and various other options. Uh, but it strikes me that the pace of reform in this space is the issue. Uh, we have various organizations in place in Victoria to look after this and to deal with the strategic planning and various other things, but it, it, as an outsider looking in, it, it strikes me that there is uh a lot happening, but not a lot happening at times. Uh, are we going fast enough? Are we, uh, is the leadership strong enough, as Councilor Tappos is saying? Uh, are we able to produce uh solutions uh to this particular problem for community conversation uh in a quicker way than what we are at the moment? Uh, I think we can, but I think it requires a, a change in mindset and uh, I commend Councilor Tappos for putting forward the, the, the notice of motion tonight. We're hearing uh from industry people who are driving trucks and doing all sorts of stuff around this city and beyond. Uh, all sorts of stories about what's happening in warehouses and various other places around the city. And I'm sure that, uh, you know, we've, we've seen our share of it in Brimbank as well. Uh, we do need to be putting pressure on, I think, for a faster set of strategic options for us to uh, uh, remove our waste and to come up with a, a circular economy or whatever works best uh for Victoria and this city. Uh, so I commend Councilor Tappos's motion and I, I urge the, the state government to really get cracking on this, uh, put some resources behind it and come up with a couple of radical solutions if we have to. For the incremental change doesn't work for decades. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hetch. Councillors, is there anyone else who would like to speak? For or against this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we move on to item thirteen point two, which is notice of motion, Cobain Flag. So councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification on this particular item? No? Councilor Fan, would you like to move the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to move the motion that council receive a report to consider recognising the Cobain Flag as a symbol of the Vietnamese Australian community and their refugee experience.
Thank you, Councilor Fan. Is there a second for the item? Councilor Trum? And would the member like to speak to the item?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Um, once of my experience talking to my auntie, which make me never forget was, there was a sale on the Gruyish Street, which I had to go. She said, no. I would never go on holiday on, by boat. And I said, why? She said, I have, it costs me so much to leave the country, to find a freedom. And I end up in Australia. I'm happy here. I would be so um scared to even, you know, walk into a boat because that's how much I have to pay for the cost of freedom for myself and my family. Um, that, but I never forget. So throughout the, um, my um living in Australia, I have to speak to many community member and as they wish to have your um Cobain Flag to uh be recognised as a symbol of um their refugee experience, as a symbol of freedom, humanity, um, and, yeah. Yeah, and also, you know. Sorry. Um, and to be um recognised as the symbolics for all the ceremony or event that a Vietnamese community obviously um have. Um, as the city in Brimbank has a significant portion of Australian or Vietnamese background. According to um the two thousand and sixteen I B S census, over thirteen percent of Brimbank local government, um, um, uh, of Vietnamese ancestry and over seventeen percent of the population has a, at least one parent was born in Vietnam. So, as that statistic, the yellow flag serves as a community flag, um, a symbol of the Vietnamese overseas in Victoria and in Australia, as well as other part of the world outside Vietnam. In support of that, I have um received many support, support letter from different community group, including um, um, uh, Vietnamese um association, uh, Vic- Victoria Chapter, um, the V N fifty R Club, the Vietnamese, the Brimbank Vietnamese A K Association, my Hinduism um con- congregation, or the Vietnamese Catholic Community Melbourne, Hongbang Vietnamese Ethnic School. And I, I get will be many, many more people that in support of it. So, um, I hope that my voice concludes, um, what I wish to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Fan. Uh, does the second like, would the second like to speak? Councilor Trum?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, thank you for Councilor Fan to share her story. And I also would like to say thank you to Vietnamese uh community in Victoria, Victoria Chapter. It bring up the, would like to recognise for the uh, yellow flag to be recognised. There you be aware, it's like for the October, we have a Vietnamese population, it have about two hundred ninety-four thousand seven hundred ninety-eight. For Victoria, why we have one point four of the Vietnamese population in about one hundred eight thousand, one hundred forty-two. For all the council, it have more um top of the Vietnamese population. It's like in Maribyrn, we have about nine point two, it's about nine thousand eight hundred fifty-nine. Rather than the north, we have nine point three, it's about sixteen thousand nine hundred forty. In Yara City, we have about two point seven, it's about three thousand three hundred forty. But in Brimbank, we have a large member of Vietnam population. We have now, it's about thirty-one thousand ninety-nine. All of these people, we have more the background, it from where to where. After nineteen seventy-five, when the Sylon fall, million of million of Vietnamese people escaped Vietnam. We left behind family, relatives, friends and motherland. We faced with the death on the sea or in jungle. We faced with the death on the sea or in jungle. Why? Only because of the failure. Anything we bring with us is only the symbol of the yellow flag. In year nineteen sixty two to nineteen seventy three, Australian government sent over sixty two thousand Australian soldiers served in Vietnam. Five hundred twenty one people dead in Vietnam and now we have the memorial in Sunshine. We thank you for all the veteran Australians to have a, to stand beside, to support the Vietnamese. The one I think I mentioned about the number of Vietnamese for you to know is in Brimbank, large population of Vietnamese.
Sorry, can I grant uh two minutes extra time please? Thank you.
Take con- contribution on the business, in carry support for the community. Anything they're doing for the community, but only thing is the recognise for for symbol um of the yellow flag, it's mean a loss, a lot for the Vietnamese community. I would like to share the story of my family. I lost my father when I was young. I can raise me up by my uncle, he hit the chap for the police. And in year nineteen seventy five, he been told by the communist, it's like ten day go to reunion. I is the first and go with my uncle to say goodbye. And we believe the communist will let him go back to the home after ten day. Few year later, we don't know where he is. My mum go anywhere to find where my uncle. After, she make decision for me to escape Vietnam. I on the boat with five hundred and six people. Six time I have virus. One month I stay in this island, no food, nothing, any day. We give the water, we see water. After nearly fourteen year, my uncle be back. Completely different. It's now all of my uncle is living in America because they work for the government of representative Vietnam, only me living here. We never forget, we working hard, not only me, but many Vietnamese people living in Australia. We try to bear back what we receive from the country. What we accept from the country and with the open arm and heart of the country is make our community become the stronger together. Today, I know is the motion is not make any decision, it just one during the report. But I would like to all the other councillors to recognise, to thinking what is the Vietnamese community in Brimbank doing, contribution for our city. And what they want and what they want to recognise or want you support. It recognise how hard, how difficult for them to fighting. And only thing to recognise they are is the Vietnamese community for bravery is yellow flag. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Trum. Councillors, is there anyone else who would like to speak, councillor Tarkos?
Um thank you for the very poignant stories from councillor Ryan and Trum, uh they're very moving. Um Madam Mayor, the Cobain flag is a significant part of the identity of many Vietnamese people living in Australia. And indeed, as councillor Trum pointed out, Brimbank being one of the biggest populations of Vietnamese people. Indeed, in Brimbank, from when I was at high school, I remember the arrival of refugees seeking hate, safe haven here in Australia, away from the war and chaos. For those with ties to the former South Vietnam, it symbolises what they see as their fight for democracy and freedom against the communist forces led by the former Northern Vietnam. The Vietnam War entered in nineteen seventy five with the defeat of South Vietnam, leading to a massive refugee crisis with comparisons to today, to today's humanitarian crisis that we have in Europe. The multicultural area around Brimbank and Melbourne's inner west holds a special place for the Vietnamese community's resettlement. In this, in the years that followed, in summary, Madam Mayor, the Cobain flag is not a sovereign flag as such, but it is a symbol of identity and particularly the identity of Australian Vietnamese community and their refugee experience. And for many, it symbolises not only the identity, but it symbolises their aspirations. People have left their home country in such traumatic and difficult circumstances. The stories from my own former colleagues here tonight and residents in my ward have told me how they fled risking their lives on boats and made that journey seeking safely, safety and peace away from persecution and seeking democracy and freedom. And that's what the essence for me, the Cobain flag represents in my mind, thank you.
Thank you councillor Tarkos, councillor Hiddich.
Thank you Madam Mayor, uh I'd like to just acknowledge the uh moving and seconding by two Vietnamese councillors who've done a wonderful job in not doing that. I'd also like to uh echo the words of councillor Tarkos. Uh but for me, uh this particular notice of motion is all about community. Uh this is a community first council. And the Vietnamese community in Brimbank and across Melbourne and across Australia is a, is a beautiful community. Uh we've seen it come here uh in the early years when the uh the refugee uh fight was was obvious and people started arriving in Australia. That heritage, uh that refugee heritage is what this flag represents. It is a community flag, it's not a national flag. Uh we have national flag policies and we have flag policies for cities and so on. But this isn't a national flag, this is a community flag that acknowledges uh the refugee journey of many of the Vietnamese people living in Australia today. And it seeks to raise that flag on occasions uh where there are community events. Not as a national flag, but as a community flag acknowledging the refugee journey and the refugee settlement here in Australia. And as both councillors have said, the fabulous contribution they have made to our community. Who can imagine Brimbank, Melbourne or Australia without a Vietnamese community now, it is just so enriching. So for me, this is a simple one. I wait for the report, but I wait till my end up and the report comes back to say that we filed Cobain here in Brimbank, thank you.
Thank you councillor Hiddich. Councillors, is there anyone else who would like to comment on this item? No, I'll put it to the vote, all those in favour? Carried. Okay, we now move on to item number fourteen, which is residual motions. There are no residual motions this evening, so we move on to item number fifteen, which is urgent business. So the C E O is advised that there will be another item of urgent business tonight. Uh the C E O has also advised that item fifteen point one, which is the item of urgent business, will need to be considered as a confidential item as it relates to a matter which could prejudice council or any person. So firstly, I'll ask councillors to move a procedural motion to designate item fifteen point one as confidential. We'll then move to close the meeting to the public for items fifteen point one and sixteen so that council may consider these items in a closed session. Uh so may I have a mover of a motion to designate item fifteen point one as confidential? Councillor Borg, seconded by councillor Trum.
I move the motion as per business papers.
Thank you councillor Borg, seconded by councillor Trum, so I'll put that to the the vote, all those in favour? Sorry, all those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, so may I now have another motion to close the meeting to members of the public for consideration of item fifteen point one and item sixteen, which have been designated as confidential? Is there a mover of a motion? Councillor David, do I have a second? Councillor Trum, I'll put that to the vote, all those in favour? Carried. So um after that um resolution, I'd like to designate this meeting. But we're gonna close the meeting now and consider these two confidential items, so meeting is closed to the public at nine oh three P M, thank you. Thank you for your patience, so council has considered the confidential items and resolved that they may remain confidential at this stage. But I thank everybody for your attending and interest in tonight's meeting and I declare this meeting now closed at ten past nine, thank you.